...indication by Councilman McGaughan.
Thank you for waking us all up on this beautiful day and watching over us and carrying us in this day and bringing us to this one time. Dear Lord, I ask that you watch over this council meeting and each and every mind and heart in this meeting so that we make the decisions that are best for the citizens in this county. Dear Lord, I come asking you to watch over and look after the family who lost their kid in the bus accident in Chester County. Then I ask you to watch over each and every kid, family member that was hurt, harmed, and affected in that wreck. Then I thank you for the first responders here in Chester County that assisted in that accident and got everyone that they could to safety. And Lord, I know it was only you that gave them the strength, knowledge, the know-how, the wherewithal to handle that situation. Dear Lord, I ask that you watch over the Killian family. Councilman Killian lost his aunt on Tuesday. I ask that you watch over his family. And then we ask that you watch over our fellow council member, Mike Bond, who's not here with us tonight but listening in. We ask that you continue to bless his body.
Yes.
Touch him, Lord.
Touch him.
Heal him.
Yes.
Bring him back here with us to sit here with us in this council meeting and serve his community. These and all of the things, as in your son Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, so our first order of business is to see if there's a motion to amend our agenda. We need to add a needs and assessment, a public hearing to that next meeting if this is a will of council. This is related to, this is related to Ms. Fresh Gray as she does her presentation today. Would you like to speak to that as well? As to the, as to the need?
As to the, this goes to the cog grant that, so it's necessary for this to take place today as they are moving forward with that grant. And it was advertised in the newspaper. We would need a two-thirds vote to add that to the agenda.
Is there, is there a motion to add a needs and assessment, public hearing?
I'll make a motion we add a needs and assessment to our public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. So that will be added under the public hearing portion by P. So next we have the approval of minutes for the item 3A, April 7th, 2025 county council meeting minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the April 7th, 2025 county council meeting minutes.
Second.
All right, so that's been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for the question. Those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. Next is item 3B, which is the April 14th, 2025 budget workshop meeting minutes.
Make a motion we approve the April 14th, 2025 budget workshop minutes.
I'll say it.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question. Those in favor to approve these budget workshop and meeting minutes, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, all in favor. All right, that brings us to citizens comments under item four. We have two people signed up. I'll call your name and if you'll come forward, you can state your name again and your mailing address. You'll have three minutes to speak once you do that. First person on the list is Mary Robinson.
Thank you.
Welcome.
My name is Mary Robinson, and I'm here about building a school. Just building a school. Spirit of the Lord told me one day to go out to the Mr. Son, to tell him that he's going to build a school. You know, they already voted, y'all been voted for not to build a school with the tax money. So God doing without the tax money. So they offered, when I, when I got a letter with my receipt for the first hundred dollars that I took out there when I went, and by the time I got a receipt, they had, they sent me the receipt. And you want me to read it or y'all want me? I'll be reading. It said, "Thank you for your generous donation of one hundred dollars to support building a new school, a new high school. A building fund account has been established through the Chester County Public Educational Foundation for accepting donations that will go toward building new schools for the students living in Chester, Great Falls, and Lewisville area. Donation may be mailed to Chester County Public Educational Foundation at 509 District Office Drive, Chester, South Carolina, 29706. Or individual may stop by the school district office that is also located at 509 District, Chester, South Carolina. If the donation is by check, the donor needs to indicate on the memo line of the check. School building fund. Thank you again, Ms. Robinson, for generous donation. A receipt of your one hundred dollars donation is established." And so I, I know it may seem like I'm not in my seat, unvaluable, undoable, but it's doable by what the Lord said. And so He said, "Do it," and so I've done it. And I know when y'all want to support Chester County, Chester, period, because Chester, South Carolina is the, it's Chester, South Carolina. Y'all can't do nothing without helping the city, and the city can't do nothing without helping y'all. We help each other. It's the one thing, Chester County. And Chester is a blessed place to live in. It's blessed. We're called by God for such a time as this. If anybody live in Chester, surrounded, they know something special about Chester, County. I mean, I say County, but I'm talking about Chester, South Carolina, period. And so when the young folks had won the ball tournament, you know, they went all, went all to Tennessee and all that, y'all was getting generous enough to donate toward that. So I'm asking that y'all donate toward building this school without tax money. It go envelope that I already did, and that's address on our paper. And y'all just put it in there, send it. It don't come to me, it come to them. And God bless y'all. And God is true. When God says something, He gonna do it. All right, love y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so next we have, our second person is Brad Whiteside. If you'll come forward and state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes once you do that.
Good afternoon, Chair, council members. Brad Whiteside, 2740 Dawson Drive, Banjo, Chester County Sheriff's Office. And I just want to take a second just to kind of highlight, Councilman McGaughan, appreciate your words earlier in the prayer. But Thursday, the 17th of April, was another tragic day here in Chester County. We've had several of those over the last few years, but if there is a silver lining, I know that our neighbors down in Lexington County are hurting right now, but just wanted to brag on the response all the way around from our emergency services, starting with our dispatch, Sheriff's Office, fire, everybody else, neighboring agencies, they sent tons of support. But just being on that scene and just seeing the overwhelming support and response from not only Chester County, but York County, Lancaster County, Fairfield County was amazing. Like I said, our neighbors in Lexington right now are mourning a loss of a child. And as of right now, you know, it could have been a lot worse. Unfortunately, it happened on our roadways in our county, but there's no doubt that there was a higher power looking out for everybody that day. But I just want to take a minute to brag on all our first responders and all the support that we've got, not only from our first responders, but other county entities in that matter. So they're out here doing a good job. I don't have to get up here and say it, everybody can see it, but I felt like I needed to take a moment to recognize this. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you very much. All right, so next we have our public hearing. Item 5A is ordinance 2025-10 to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Districts, Division 1, generally Section 2, 266. Boards and commissions appointed by council, residency, vacancy, quorum, compensation, by providing for revisions of the membership and operation of boards and commissions in Section 2-267, Personnel Handbook of the Code of Ordinances of Chester County, South Carolina, to amend the ordinance numbering for Section 2-267 and to provide for other related matters. I don't have anyone signed up on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this? Seeing no one, I will call, I will declare that that public hearing is closed. But we do have our second item for public hearing, and this is the needs and assessment. Is there anyone, someone didn't have a sign-up sheet, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to that? In a moment, when we'll, any, any member of the citizen, any citizen that would like to speak to that?
I think Mr. Ray was going to stand up, but we have you set on the agenda in just a bit.
Right. Anybody else? All right, if not, I also declare that that, that public hearing is closed. All right, so that brings us to item 6A, which is the second reading of ordinance 2025-10. To amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Districts, Division 1. This is also for the same item I just read for the public hearing. Is there a motion for that second reading of ordinance 2025-10?
I'll make a motion we approve the second reading of ordinance 2025-10.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd ask our administrator just to speak to this ordinance for a minute, just so that, for clarity, for the public's clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Guy. And if council pleases, I want to let our attorney speak to, just give a brief overview of the changes.
Thank you, council. Good evening. Presented for your review of the Boards and Commissions ordinance, it provides for expanded guidance as to meeting procedures, notice requirements for open positions, membership criteria for Boards and commissions, and among other updates. Additionally, it includes the renumbering of a section that was for Personnel Handbook. It's moving that section to be under the position of departments as it pertains to our employees, not necessarily our boards and commissions. So that just renumbers within our ordinances, and everything else is meant to clarify and expand upon our Boards and Commissions requirements and what's expected with the accounting.
I have a question. In here it says, "Appointed by council, residency, vacancy, quorum, compensation." Do we have any boys that we pay?
No, sir, but if that were to be approved by ordinance, it would have to go before council again be approved through ordinance. It allows for that if there were something to come up in the future, but at this time, not to my knowledge.
Is there any more discussion? No, I'll call for the question. Those in favor of the second reading of ordinance 2025-10, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that brings us to item 6B, which is a proclamation in honor of South Carolina Stewardship Week. And we do have some very special guests in the audience for this, for this proclamation. They are, first of all, we have Mr. Matt Turner. He's a longtime commissioner and a great representative of the eastern side of the county and a longtime, longtime service there. We have Mr. Robin Dean. Glad to have you here. Very special person, I have my father, Jeff Wilson. And I'm also a longtime serving member and a former past, past president of the State Association for the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. Glad to have you here. And a few other members that are not here, but I know they want to be here, and that's their chairman, Alan Beer, longest-serving commissioner for in the state of South Carolina. So we have him in Chester County, so that's pretty cool. And then also Ethan Bedford, and he does a good job as well. So thank you, they're just like us, and that they're elected, most of them are elected just like we are, and serve, serve well. And they're here for this proclamation. We also have Ms. Susan Liley, which is their director, and glad to have you here as well. So thank y'all for being here. Let me, let me read your proclamation, and then, once I do that, we'll take a picture. That's good with everybody. So it says, "A proclamation recognizing soil and water stewardship week. Whereas healthy fertile soil and clean water are essential to life, forming the foundation for nutrition, agriculture, and environmental sustainability worldwide. Whereas the adoption and implementation of effective conservation practices serve to protect and enhance the health of soil, water, wildlife, plants, and air, thereby supporting a high quality of life for all. Whereas all our continued ability to produce abundant, high-quality food and ensure access to clean water depends on the responsible management and preservation of these vital natural resources. Whereas environmental stewardship is a collective responsibility, encouraging all individuals, communities, and organizations to work together to safeguard our natural resources for the benefit of current and future generations. And now, therefore, I, Pete Wilson, Chairman of, Chairman on behalf of the Chester County Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 28 through May 5, 2025, as Soil and Water Stewardship Week in Chester County, South Carolina, and encourage all citizens to participate in activities and initiatives that promote the conservation and sustainable use of our natural resources." And this was done on this day, the 21st day of April. So again, I want to thank y'all for being here. Is there any comments from council? Let's, if y'all don't mind, just go forward and take a picture. We have a, we have a presentation here as well. Y'all go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members. First, I'd like to just provide a couple of updates. Vista Properties, who submitted a rezoning application in December of 2024 to rezone the three parcels located behind the Dollar General, that's bounded by J. Cochran Bypass, Old York Road, Hughes Road, and then the Norfolk Southern Railline. That property totaled 45.09 acres, and the plan's called for the construction of 114 homes. If you remember, we were into second reading of the developmental agreement and the rezoning of that parcel for the subdivision. We were notified last week of their intent to withdraw their application due to their inability to comply with certain terms of our standard developmental agreement at this time. Home sales remain strong in Chester County as we are seeing significant increase in inquiries from developers exploring opportunities for new residential subdivisions. So I just wanted to provide that update to council. Any questions on that? May 5th, don't forget, will be our first reading of our budget ordinance and all associated documents that go with that. We had a very, what I would consider a successful, a very successful budget workshop last week, and I'm not going to spoil the surprise. I'll let council do that on May 5th, when it gets time to present that budget for this, this upcoming year and discuss that further. So the last thing that I have for the administrator's update today goes along with what Major Whiteside and Mr. Guy spoke about, and I just wanted to talk about the EMS response. And while I say EMS, but our first responders, I called it an EMS response, but it was all of our first responders. It was law enforcement, at least, fire, it was volunteers, and I'll talk about that. But I wanted to say a few words about last Thursday. So the first is, I want to say on behalf of Chester County government and all of our employees, that our condolences go out to the Gonzalez, Lenores family, who lost their son in that tragic accident. Our prayers and our thoughts are with the family, with their family, all the students, all the staff that were on that field trip on that day, as well as Lexington County School District and all those affected by the events of last Thursday. Next, I want to say a thank you, and a big thank you to, and if I try to name everyone, I'm going to name a few, but if I tried to, if I don't say someone or a group, it's because I don't have enough paper. And I want to say thank you to our surrounding counties. I was driving to, so when it first happened and I was notified, I was driving to the scene, and, you know, somebody said, "How'd you get to the scene?" I said, "You forget, I was a cop for 28 years. I know how to get to a scene, no matter what that means sometimes." But I was driving to the scene and I got a phone call, and I got a, I didn't recognize the number, but I answered it, and it was the director of EMS out in Lancaster County, Clay Cato, who I know fairly well. And he was on vacation in Myrtle Beach, and he said, "Brian," he goes, "I'm not there." He said, "I just heard what happened." He said, "But I'm sending seven ambulances your way." And so he said, "Anything else you need?" You know, and I know he was communicating with Kell and everyone else. He said, "Anything else you need, you call me." He said, "My phone will be with me the rest of the day." He said, "We're here, we'll send everything we got for you." And so that, that was just kind of one instance of, you know, our surrounding people. There were volunteers. I saw volunteers, not just on scene, but volunteer firefighters that were responding to their stations to answer calls throughout the county while those that were on duty were on scene. I saw volunteers on scene. I saw volunteers passing out water. I saw people doing everything from the most minuscule task to, to the most complex task. Our state EMS director, Henry Lewis, he was on scene. He showed up on scene to provide support for our EMS personnel, as well as to help allocate resources and provide resource allocation. He called me later that night as well, after I was back at home, and he made some comments to me about our, our staff and their professionalism, and how proud he was as a state EMS director to see what he saw, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. But all the Chester County employees, I saw EMS employees, that it was their day off work, and they were working at their other jobs, whether it be at the hospital or wherever it was, that showed up either on scene or showed up out here to answer service calls. I said, "I saw people that were off, working other jobs, left their other jobs, came out to the scene to provide assistance." You know, Grace Wheeler, Tyne Perry, Kenneth Fundaburk from the school district was on scene, and she had a clipboard in her hand, and she might get mad if I tell this, but she was in jeans and a pair of Crocs over there on the interstate, helping triage and locate everyone that was supposed to be there with a clipboard, trying to make sure everybody was accounted for. David McCain was out, was out there doing everything he could, you know, so just the list of people and the help we got from Fairfield County, from Piedmont, from Lancaster, from Union, just all around the phone calls, and Kell got twice as many as I got. Kell was homesick, and I look over there at one point, and there's Kell in his fire hat, working away. JP was our incident commander, and we'll talk about that, but JP, he was actually the incident commander. And I'll talk about incident command and stuff in just a minute, but let's talk, let's go ahead and Chester County incident command. Everybody knows my, where my career was. In 2012, I, I worked a very similar incident in San Francisco County, Florida, very, very similar, bus crash, mass casualty, loss of life. And so I've, I've been on a scene like this before. I've been on scenes with mass casualties before. And, you know, we talk about, hey, that's what these firefighters, EMS personnel, that's what our first responders are, law enforcement, and I did, Brad was right there on the scene all day by me too, running around. He was doing, he was doing the work of a deputy directing traffic, making sure people got in and out. People were doing everything that they needed to do. But our men and women trained for this, and I've been on multiple instances. I know what incident command looks like, and I've watched incident command run smoothly. This incident command and this scene, and I'm sure Kell will find a nitpick, because that's what they do. That's what, at the end of the day, when they debrief, they find the little things that they can always get better. But this was a very well-run scene. Deputy Director JP McNeil was incident commander. Deputy Director John Faulkner was in charge of EMS operations. Kell Benson showed up on scene sick. David Dutton, a chief of Fort Lawn, T-Melton, the chief of Richburg Fire on scene. What is most important, so scenes are complex, and you have patients, you have assessments, you have triage, you have emergency care, you got safety reunification, all these things to think about. How, we only got seven ambulances in Chester County. Thirty-eight people were transported to the hospital within one hour. Think about that. How does that get done? We've got rural counties around us too. And so that was the coordination of efforts. But they're very complex scenes. Thirty-eight, I said that, I observed one of the most professional and well-run incident scenes of this nature that I've witnessed in all my 28 years of law enforcement. I get back to David Dutton, T-Melton, Kell. Kell was an incident commander. He was, he was sort of overseeing a portion of reunification, I think is what he was working on, trying to make sure the names. I, I saw him running around doing that. But I saw people who are normally the chiefs and the bosses, who were doing their piece to the puzzle, who, there was no egos out there, there was no who was in charge, the incident commander was in charge, and everyone out there. When I walked up to T-Melton, when I walked up to David Dutton, they were doing their portion that they were assigned to do, and they were assisting in every way. And it was like a well-oiled machine out there. And so I, I think the message I want to get across really is, I want council and the community to understand, and I want to commend the personnel on scene, their professionalism, their remarkable skill, their seamless teamwork that went on, and, you know, when you've been in these scenes and you see these situations, they can be really good and they can be really bad. It's like a puzzle when you're trying to get all this done. And what really made me proud that day was to see Chester County, rural Chester County, a major incident on I-77 happen like this, and to watch the men and women, not only the teamwork, but the professionalism and how well they're trained and how well it was handled. You all should be extremely, extremely proud. And so even in the most harrowing moments, when lives hang in the balance and chaos surrounds us, true leaders and professionals come together with calm courage and unwavering purpose. It's in these critical moments that their strength shines the brightest. And with that, that concludes my administrator's report. Mr. Chairman.
You know, Ed, just to touch to that, Andy Murphy was at Ed's War, Richburg was covering Richburg and Glando, and five or six calls in addition to what was going on out there. So the citizens of Chester County, all of that on interstate were not left uncovered, and that is what you just got to say.
That's right, and that, and I'll tell you, so any, when we, Mr. Edgy brings up a good point. Now, it's kind of one of the points I was trying to make, because one of the first questions I turned and asked Kell or JP is, hey, you got enough people to cover the rest of the county. They had already gotten Lancaster, Union, and everyone helping cover calls. They had already got volunteers and other people in to cover those calls. We had our volunteers. I know Lando showed some people up on the scene, and then they also were, were answering calls. But to that point... But to that point, the county was not left uncovered at all. And that was planned for. But what everybody doesn't know, while that major incident was going on, there was a major wreck on Mountain Gap Road at the same time. And there was a, I believe there was a structure fire or something else that...
There was a heart attack on York Street.
That's what it was. And so there was a lot of things going on. And when you train for these types of incidents, generally that gets thrown into your situation as well in those training situations. But I think everyone, our law enforcement, firefighters, everyone performed flawlessly.
All right, thank you very much for that report. For your leaderships and contributions. So it brings us to our consent agenda, which is item A. We have this, A is the second reading of CCMA 25-13. And B is the second reading of CCMA 25-15. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item A and B.
A second.
All right, so we have a motion to approve this consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Call for the question. Who's in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All in favor. Next is old business, number nine. Nine A is the second reading of CCMA 25-14, which is Kimberly's Arco, request a portion, 1.5 acres, and tax map. located at 1937 Baton Rouge Road, Chester, South Carolina, 29706. From Rural Two District to Rural One District. Planning Commission voted five to zero to deny. I would like to ask Mr. Ward, our Planning and Development Director, to come forward with an update on that one before we do a motion.
Thank you, Chair, Council. We had a meeting of the Planning Commission last week and I presented the new information regarding this rezoning to them for their review. And I will briefly cover to you the facts of the case and the message that the Planning Commission asked me to pass along to you. As a reminder, the applicant requested to rezone a 1.5 acre portion of her 3.9 acre piece of property from R2 to R1 in order to build a new stick-built house for her daughter on a new rear lot. At the original Planning Commission meeting, there was discussion about the surrounding West Chester area and the zoning precedent. But the Commission believed at the time that she could simply rezone her property to allow for two, close to two acre lots, and not continue with the rezoning. And applicant agreed to this solution. The Planning Commission voted to recommend denial of the application. However, after that initial Planning Commission meeting and discussions with the surveyor, it was discovered that the original survey was incorrect, that she did not have close to four acres of usable land. And so she no longer had the ability to resurvey her property and have two, two acre pieces. I presented this new information last week in the Planning Commission meeting. And after discussion, the four members believed that this new information would have changed the recommendation of denial and asked me to pass along that to you. I'm here if you have any other questions.
The Planning Commission voted to force their decision to deny to approve. Is that what you just said?
Almost, there was no formal vote taken because there was no prior notice given since the applicant had already come before the Planning Commission to sort of come to county council. So we could not bring it back to the Planning Commission at that point. That was an option that I offered them, if they would like me to request the applicant to withdraw and come back before them, start the process over. And the members present at the Planning Commission meeting felt it would be best simply for me to tell you all that this new information would have changed the recommendation.
So when you say usable land, it has to do with a road is not allowed to be used as part of the parcel acreage?
You are correct, yes, sir. So we have a clause in our zoning ordinance that says that the road right-of-way and any easement right-of-ways cannot count towards your minimum lot size. The applicant, Miss Zarco, a portion of her land goes all the way across Baton Rouge Road there. So there is quite a bit of her land, roughly 0.4 acres, that is the road, the road right-of-way on either side, as well as the potential new easement.
So the deal would be, the easiest way for us would be to override the Planning Commission's denial. Vote of county council, yes, would that make it quicker or would we need to go back to the Planning Commission?
It is in your hands now, Councilman Aggie, how you want to proceed. But yes, it is up to the county council at this point to either vote yes or no on this.
I make a motion that the county council override the Planning Commission's denial of this piece of CCMA 25-14 on the advice of the Planning Commission, Mr. Ward.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to actually approve this second reading. Is there any discussion?
I'll mention that I had a call the morning after our previous meeting when we discussed this from one of the Planning Commission members. And he stated essentially what Mr. Ward said, that they were under the impression that there would be no need to rezone because you'd have two one acre lots. But he didn't sense any hesitancy to have rezoned one of the lots, R1, under the circumstances. And since the survey was wrong and some of the property had to be taken out for right-of-ways and easements and things, then that would leave you essentially a two acre lot and a one and a half acre lot in round numbers.
I would say my input would be that this is kind of special circumstances, so much of the property is in the right-of-way of the main road there. It just seems like that's unfortunate for the landowner. I don't believe that if this is approved, I don't believe it's going to change the character of that area by having one additional home in that area. And so I think it's relative to our ability to change this in our favor if we choose to.
So for clarity's sake, some of the road and some of the right-of-way is actually her property that was not added in originally.
Right.
Yes, sir, you are correct. Her property line extends all the way across Baton Rouge Road. So she in essence has two road right-of-ways, one on either side of the road, as well as the road itself. She owns the land on which the road travels. So it is, as Chairman Wilson said, unusual circumstance to have so much of a road right-of-way that would have to be subtracted from the usable land.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Call for the question. So those in favor of approving this would be not taking the recommendation to deny, but rather to approve the second reading of CCMA 25-14. Raise your hand and say aye.
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 All in favor. That is approved for the second reading. So it'll be back on the agenda for third reading next time. So that brings us to number 10, which is new business. A is the Community Development Block Grant Program, the Priority Needs List Review. We have Mr. Fraser Ray here with Catawba Regional Council of Governments. We do this every year and we appreciate you being here, so welcome. Have the presentation go through as well.
I've signed in sheets. Thank you so much for having me. Yes, this is an annual thing that we do so that you can apply for community development, community development block grant projects. And although we don't have any right now, we hope that we will. And although the county is part of the regional, we give the four counties sponsor an application to apply for a grant that pays Catawba Regional to do things just like this and planning and all that. So y'all are a part of that. Just to let you know, first of all, that you have a citizens' participation plan. And that means that you have to, any of these projects that we do and any of these hearings that we have, and I know y'all are the same way, you have to publicly advertise all of your hearings and all of your meetings. And the ones that we do, they have to be published in the paper at least seven days prior to the hearing, as well as being posted around. So your clerk was very good about posting everything, so thank you so much for doing that. Then if you have an application, you have to have another public hearing to review the application. And if it gets funded, if there are any changes to the projects that are major changes, there has to be another hearing for that. And then at the end of a project, you also have to have another public hearing. So there are a lot of opportunities for the public to be involved with these projects. This is of course, and then one other thing I'll just mention, and there again, y'all have been very proactive in supporting Fair Housing Month, which is this month. And so Chester County is a big supporter of fair housing. So again, thank you to the clerk for having all those things. What I want to do now, I know that the council probably had a chance to look at what was sent as far as community development block grant program, but some of it the audience might not know. So I'll just briefly go through this PowerPoint so that y'all can see what is what. The Community Development Block Grant Program is HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development Program. And that is a federal program. And in South, there's funds are distributed to all of the states. And in South Carolina, those funds go through the Department of Commerce. And then localities such as Chester County apply for those funds from the Department of Commerce. And at that point, and they also oversee the project once it's done. Then it's really designed to provide assistance to units of local governments and providing economic and community development opportunities and like revitalization needs, especially for low and moderate income people. This program is specifically, unless it's going to be, and I'll tell you that in a minute, specifically for low and moderate income people. And that's based on the, at least 80% of the median income for Chester County. Towns, cities, counties are the only ones that can apply. I know the county has sponsored projects in the past with Chester Metropolitan District, as well as Chester Sewer District, or Chester wastewater recovery, because they provide the water and sewer. And they cannot apply. So the county, or if it's in the city limits, they will apply for those funds. And then there's a sub-recipient agreement, we work together with those. It cannot be within an entitlement area. And Rock Hill is the only entitlement area within the Catawba region. Those areas are, it's a different community development block grant program. It's an entitlement program and they're entitled to a certain amount of money every year. As I just said, no nonprofits. And we've also done things for nonprofits in other areas. I can't think of any that we've done actually for Chester County. But if a nonprofit, we've done something for, it was in York County, to do a senior center, not a senior center, but to provide services for seniors. And that nonprofit actually, York County applied on their behalf, so we can do those also. We have to meet a national objective and meet eligibility. The national objective is, like I said, the first one is benefit to low and moderate income people. And we can also aid in the prevention or elimination of slums of light. And that's when we can, in fact, we did a project a while ago to clear the Springsteen mill. That is to eliminate some slums of light. We can also, if you have an area, it has to be a whole area with dilapidated houses and vacant houses, we can also do that. If we do those projects, you do not have to be low and moderate income, but you're doing eliminating the slums of light. And then if, sometimes there are other urgent community development needs that we can do. Eligible activities under public improvements, water, sewer, roads, drainage, brownfields projects, that's like the one for Springsteen. Downtown street scape improvements, planning for regional infrastructure, library facilities or equipment for internet connectivity, publicly owned children facilities for children twelve and under. And that's actually a new one about the children. We can also do publicly owned facilities for educational or workforce training, police substations, demolition of vacant, dilapidated residential structures, like I just mentioned, fire substations or fire trucks, publicly owned health and/or social services facilities. A couple of years ago, we closed out, y'all did a project to upgrade the DSS building. So that was one of those, it was funded with this money. And also do public facility modifications to address ADA compliance or energy efficiency. And newer upgraded sidewalks in low and moderate income residential areas, parks, trails, or greenways in low and moderate income areas. And I know Mr. Aggie is familiar with, we've tried to use this money in the past for the Richburg Fire Department. And we weren't able to because it was not serving low and moderate income areas. So that is one of the big, I guess hurdles that we have to work with with this program. There's five different program categories. Community infrastructure, community enrichment, local priorities program, ready-to-go, public facilities, and business development. So I'll go through quickly through those. First of all, how much can you apply? They went up a couple of years ago under the community infrastructure and we can apply for a million dollars. Community enrichment, that's like one that we did for the DSS building, 750,000. Local priorities, those have been, the most, most of those that we've done have been parks or trails in low and moderate income areas. But they went back from 150,000 to 300,000. And then ready-to-go, or ready-to-go is 500,000. There's a match required, 10% of all of those, whatever you get from CBG. It can be from, you can do in-kind, you can do, you know, general fund, you can do loans, that sort of things. And then there's a business development program. And that is really, it used to be called the Economic Development Program. And that is going to be, actually comes through your economic development department. And that's when they, if a company's coming into the county and they might need water, sewer, roads, whatever like that, they will go to the Department of Commerce and say, "Do you have any money?" And they sit around a table and say, "Okay, what pots of money do we have?" And if they decide that it will be eligible for this money, then they contact us. We haven't done one of those in this region. They really don't do a lot of those across the state, mainly because they're used for really big projects and that sort of things. But in order to be eligible, the company has to say that they're going to hire so many people within so many years and they have to be available for at least 51% low and moderate income people. The spring application, in fact, the applications were due today. So we've just submitted, we only did one application. One actually fell out last week and we were really upset because it was completed. But sometimes that happens. The fall ones, and the ones that are doing the spring are water and sewer. The infrastructure in the fall is everything else pretty much. So those application requests are due August 15th and the applications are due September 15th. So now's the time to be looking at whatever projects you might want to do. And let's see, and I won't go through a lot of these because it's very long. And I've pretty much said what you could do in the fall round with the community enrichment. Like I said, the brownfields, you can do planning, library facilities. We've talked, we actually tried to do one for the city of Chester for the library here. But because there again, the city is low and moderate income, the county's not. It kind of fell out. So, but if there's a library in the low and moderate income area, I thought about Great Falls might be one. I know the county owns that, I don't know if y'all need to do anything there. You can do, like I said, childcare facilities and transportation facilities. We can also do crime prevention, like the police substations. I've pretty much said all of this, the fire substations, the health and social services and those ADA clients. And then all these others that we've already talked about. But we really, most of these projects are to impact economic development or increase economic competitiveness, or address public health, safety, and quality of life. And again, they have to serve low and moderate income areas. I know another thing that we talked about with the county before, there are some of the roads like Lancaster Street, which is Highway 9, and 72, which is Saluda. Maybe even doing something with upgrading, if it's in the city, we could probably do that. But maybe to do a street scape sort of thing. So we'll probably talk about that in the next month or so.
Could you go back one slide?
Yes.
It says, I can't talk real good tonight, so I apologize.
That's fine.
Can't talk good anyway, but say hard. Public health or social services facilities or equipment in underserved area, Mr. Wilson. I've been talking about senior services in Chester County. And they are funded significantly by the Department of Transportation. Mrs. Jenny Davis, Ms. Davis, have been really working trying to get a bill. Is that, is that something that we could run through the CAG?
Possibly. Is it there now?
Yes.
It is. And?
What the building was, was the, it used to be the old nursing home for the Chester County welfare, or whatever it used to be before they, and so they're in this building. It's pretty, pretty decrepit. So they really need something to go in there to rebuild that. And what they do is they, York County has it too, but senior service is connected to Chester Connector. They carry all these people to the doctors and to work and things like that. It's really a good deal, I mean, as far as that, if we could help them in some way through Catawba Regional, it would really be beneficial.
So is the building, you need to upgrade that building?
Yeah, they've got plans and everything the Department of Transportation was trying to fund it for. But here again, like everything else, those kind of people get pushed down to the bottom of their ladder. If we could help them, it would be beneficial.
Only, who owns the building? Does the county own the building?
I'm not, no, they used to, but I don't know that they do now. I think it's owned by senior services now. I will get Ms. Davis, Ms. Jenny Davis, to talk to you.
Yeah, the one thing, we can't do it unless the county owns the building. Now, there can be, I don't know if they, I don't know if y'all would want to do this or if they would want to, but you know, they could maybe, I don't know if we could do it with a long-term lease or not, but.
At one time, it was owned by the county, so I don't know the answer.
But I don't know if y'all would want to.
I don't think we own it really.
If I find out.
Okay, do, and what was Jenny's last name?
Davis, Jenny Davis, Ms. Jenny Davis, she's the head of the, it's the senior services.
Is it, is it part of the, like the seniors, like the, is the senior center there also? Or is that different?
So I think you're talking about York's program. It's different, it's two separate programs.
And it's mainly for transportation for these people?
It's transportation and some other things that they do that I'm not really all that familiar with it, but I'll find out.
Okay.
Because that would be a very beneficial place for the, for the low and moderate income people in our county, because they would really do a good job.
And if you have seniors, they, that kind of automatically is?
I'll find out.
Is good, so, yeah, okay, that'd be great. That's great. Let's see, and then the ready-to-go program is really for infrastructure, community enrichment, and local priorities program. Sometimes things come up within that year, that twelve months, especially with an infrastructure that you might, you don't want to wait that long. But it does have to be ready to go. It has to be designed by an engineer, permitted, ready to go when you apply. But you can apply anytime during the year on that. And then that's really all of the, like I said, that was a very brief overview, but I know it takes a whole time, so I didn't want to elaborate. But are there any questions at all? I know, Mr. Ag, thank you for yours, but even in the audience?
Yes, I have.
Just saying.
The grants is just for same places and stuff that's owned by the county. The building has itself got owned by the county.
For this particular program, I'm expecting. Anybody else? Anyone else from council? But this time, and I know council has, and I just sent you the list too, of your priority needs from last year. And I'll read over them so everybody can hear. And we'll definitely don't want to put senior services on here under this because there are things on here that you can't necessarily apply for a community development block grant, but they're still your needs. So we just want to, we just update this every year. The number one is upgrades water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer infrastructure and services in low and moderate income areas. And to include infrastructure upgrades in East Chester, Lancaster Street, Saluda Street, McClureer Street, and in the city of Chester. And water upgrades in the Lincolnville Street neighborhood, and storm drainage in the Cedar Grove area of Chester County. This also includes upgrades of Sandy River wastewater treatment plant. We usually, in most of our needs lists, most of the localities have water, sewer, those sort of infrastructures, number one, because that's usually what we normally are applying for. Number two, renovate or construct the following facilities, facility for the joint location of services to include SCDHEC, SC Works, and the Chester County Board of Disabilities and other agencies. There was discussion a couple of years ago when we were finishing up the DSS building about maybe doing some of the, expanding that building to put some of these services in. I don't know if that's still something y'all want to do or not. Number two under that is probate judge's office, the federal building. The third is county recreation facilities to include the Republic Park and Dawson Drive, and then the county jail. And we'll put, I'll put under this list the senior services too. I think y'all want to, but do y'all want all of those things to stay on there?
I would recommend that they all stay on there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. And then number three is undertake street scape improvements. And I just mentioned those, to enhance the main entrances into the city of Chester to include the South Carolina Highways, seventy-two, Saluda Street, and Highway nine, which is Lancaster Street. And those improvements can include lighting sidewalks, landscaping, water, sewer, and other infrastructure. And number four is to address slums and lighted areas. This includes the clearance of brownfield areas, as well as following abandoned mills, Great Falls Mill number two, and number three, Eureka Mill and the Gale Mill. This also includes the demolition of dilapidated buildings and residences in low and moderate income areas. Five was support additional Chester County library facilities to provide education and training for low and moderate income citizens in order to enhance employment opportunities. Number six is expand water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer to low and moderate income areas not being served currently. And number seven is construct and upgrade an infrastructure, to promote economic development through expansion of existing industries and locations of new industries. That's always on here, and just in case you have an economic development project. Eight is extend water, sewer, and other infrastructure services to affordable housing heights in order to promote housing opportunities for low and moderate income persons. Nine is extend water and sewer along the I-77 corridor, including SC Highway ninety-seven interchange and Exit fifty-five. Ten is to upgrade sidewalks, include Ashford Street from Ella to JA Cochrane Bypass, the area from Parkway Avenue to the JA Cochrane Bypass, York Street, the Gale Mill neighborhood, Rendell Street, areas along JA Cochrane Bypass, and sidewalks in the town of Fort Long. And eleven is, it's always on there at the end of everybody's, is to continue to further fair housing in Chester County. I know with the sidewalk, well, with the parks first, we've tried to do some parks and have had some issues just trying to prove that they're low and moderate income. But I know your Dawson Drive park is, you know, something that could possibly be there. But I don't know if y'all want to add anything to any of these or take anything off or move them around.
Mr. Chairman, if I may for just a minute. So the Dawson Drive will be, we're trying to finalize that becoming a county property. So I think that one definitely, and the, what's the name of the building that's there? It's disabilities, do you know the building I'm talking about?
I do.
And they do have some, there's some current sewer issues that we need to address. And so I don't know how soon, I know the deadline for that, but it just came up last week.
Okay.
So I know we missed the deadline on that.
Well, yeah, but unless you wanted to, if it's doing it for the building, do you have to do anything to the building or water, sewer to the building?
So it's water, it's the water and sewer lines that service both that building and Dawson Drive, as well as the building needs upgrades as well. But it's not our building, that building is not. But the service line is on our property. So, and that's where kind of the question comes into play. But that's one option. I know we haven't got to talk about some of the things that we will in the future, but we're also, I don't know if it qualifies, we're in the middle of a project with a courthouse that is an ADA compliance project. We're funding it partially through CPST funds, but that's something that came up after the fact that we're working on, and it might exceed our funds. So Mr. Hayes, we're waiting on engineering design and the cost opinion, but we have some major work to do on McAlley, it's McAlley, McAlley?
McAlley.
McAlley, I'm sorry. I confuse those. But we're going to have to potentially turn that into a one-way street to even be able to get grades to do what we have to do. So that one, and then I know you guys helped us with the brownfield on the federal building, which we appreciate, but that building qualifies as well, correct?
Good.
And then, and I'm kind of making these suggestions for council somewhat that we also have the Gale Mill sidewalks that are in dire need. And we studied that one time, but they did not qualify.
I don't know that we, well, we couldn't do it for a while. We couldn't do sidewalks, now we can.
Okay.
But one thing is, I need to look when I get back in the office. But I think the Gale Mill is what they call a census designated place where if we could, if we could show that if it is and it's low and moderate income, then you don't have to do income surveys. If you don't, if it's not like that, you'd have to go door to door and do income surveys. Which can be done, but it's, they're time consuming.
They're state roads, but there, it's a state road that runs through there, but the state says sidewalks, they've abandoned, Springs put the sidewalks in. Sidewalks have been abandoned, and so they're in very, very bad shape.
I think that, that could definitely be, and so Springs, so.
When it was built, Springs, obviously, but the homes, but the sidewalks, it was a state road. The state never accepted, there was never a deed of that easement.
So does that automatically go back to the county then?
Well, that's the question, so.
That would be a question, because it'd have to be publicly.
I'm sure the county could accept the responsibility of it if it was voted upon by council, but something needs to be done to it.
We definitely need to add that on the list now somewhere.
So those are just sort of my suggestions, council.
In fact, we will put under the facilities, why don't we put, you want to put the, what would you call it? The disabilities building?
I don't think you're going to be able to do anything yet, but the infrastructure part that's leading to that and to Dawson Drive, but I can call you, we're still in some initial talks with CWR. We have, we know what we're going to have to, we're going to have to replace a line that crosses a creek.
Well, even though you might not, might not be solidified, it doesn't hurt to put it on here.
Right.
And then you don't have to redo it a year if you want to apply next spring. Same way with the courthouse ADA, I think we could put that under the renovations.
That serves family court as well as the regular courthouse.
Family court and regular. And again, if it's ADA, we don't have to do low and moderate income. That's, that's a good thing. Okay, and we definitely will add, I'll put the senior services under there also. And I think that's, I think that's adding everything y'all talked about.
We talked about sidewalks, but that's already on there under number two?
Yeah, well, I was going to move it up. Because one thing, if you want to apply for something, you want it to be number one, two, or three. So, let's see, I think what we could do, you could actually put it, we could add it up as number three and take the street scape down. Because it might take, I don't know if you'll, and have the street scape as number four. That work?
I'm going to make a move to that.
All right. Well, that's all I have, although I think the next on the agenda is to approve this. So you don't really have a solidified list. I mean, we talked about it, and I don't know if you want to approve it, and then I'll just send it to you tomorrow, or you can.
We could potentially approve it with the changes that.
Yeah.
So we can, so. Is there any more discussion with council?
Well, thank you so much. Can I get something to you tomorrow?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks very much for being here tonight. So next, we do have the approval of the Chester County twenty-twenty-five priorities needs list. To approve it as discussed.
My question, I approve the prioritized needs list for March twenty-twenty-four.
I'll say. The motion needs to be with the changes that were discussed.
All right, let's get clear one time. So, Ms. Ag, do you want to restate it, make sure that we're all on the same board? This is with the changes that we just discussed, is that?
My question, we approve the prioritized needs list as changed into my statement.
And I'll say.
All right, so we have a motion and a second discussion. Call for the question. Is it favorable, please, Ray, Ray, and say aye?
Aye.
All right, I will favor it. That's been approved. Thank you. Next, we have item ten C, which is the consideration and discussion of Chester County subdivision orders. So I'll call for Mr. Jeremy Ward again, our planning director. He's going to give us a quick presentation and overview of where we're at with this third draft.
Thank you very much, Chair, County Council. I'll try to move us along through this quickly. You should have received last week the most recent draft, draft number three, of the new subdivision codes from the Planning Commission. And I'm here tonight to talk you through kind of the top changes from the first draft that you reviewed publicly. And I will talk you through each one of those changes. If you have comments about each particular change or would like to discuss something among yourselves or vote to have that changed, that would be the opportunity. We'll also have a time at the end if you have any other points as you've been reading through this code that you would like to change as well.
So I do want to be clear, so tonight, we're not necessarily taking a vote, right?
No, sir, you're not.
So tonight, it's all about discussion, and then this will be on our agenda for the first meeting you made.
Yes, sir, that is the plan.
That'll be the first reading.
Yes, and.
See how it goes tonight.
That's right.
No votes tonight.
There are no votes needed. This is a time for you to come to a consensus or tell me you want me to go back and look at something more, research, bring you more options, flat out change something, kind of the first review meeting before we get into the public hearings. So I will note with gratitude that you, the Chester County Council, and Mr. Hester have prioritized transparency and citizen input throughout this process. That does not mean that this draft is perfect, but there have been, it's been an honest and an open process with plenty of citizen engagement. We have also had a priority to make this as excellent as possible upfront. This is our first major update to our subdivision codes since two thousand and two. And the draft that you have before you has seen over three hundred combined hours of writing, review among the planning mission, councilmen, other department heads within Chester County, reviewed by three outside planners around the state and beyond, and comments by citizens, landowners, and builders to bring us to this point. As Chairman Wilson said, here's where we are in the process in red. This is your first review of draft number three. As Mr. Hester said, depending on how much discussion, review, changes that you want, we could always do one, two, three more reviews before we get into the readings. This would be the fastest, the fastest schedule is to have our first review tonight, and then three readings over the next three meetings. I will quickly hit our subdivision code objectives. I will say that throughout all of these, our objective has been to create a policy that is specific and unique to Chester County. You, as the council, has told me that you do not want. You, as the councilors, told me that you do not want something that is copy and paste it from anywhere else, and with this to be unique to our situations. I'll also note that many of the initial recommendations or points in here, like street trees, sidewalks, road buffers, and outdoor recreational facilities were taken directly from the results of the public workshops that we did back in October, November, all around the county, that we had about 600 citizens participate in, so we took their feedback, reviewed it, and put it into these codes. Some of our objectives are protect our rural heritage and environment, create safe homes and neighborhoods for different ages and income brackets, that means houses that everyone can afford, with opportunities for recreation, community enjoyment of nature, acquire higher standards for beauty and environmental preservation, and lastly, make the subdivision approval process more clear, uniform, and easy to understand for all parties, make it objective, not subjective. So, let me review very quickly the top, or the first category, which is the subdivision classifications. As you'll recall, our previous codes only have two classifications for subdivisions. We have minor subdivisions, which are nine or less, and we have major subdivisions, which are over nine. We've added in several more categories here, and if you'll see there, one of the points of intense discussion in meetings between the Planning Commission is where that line should be drawn between the minor subdivisions and the major subdivisions. Current recommendation either the Planning Commission is that the minor subdivision should be up to 12 lots, medium subdivisions up to 13. I'll give a quick recap of why this line of demarcation is important, why it's important that we consider this cutoff point between a minor and a medium subdivision. You'll see on the left there, the requirements for minor subdivisions, they're very light. They allow non-engineered gravel streets or direct driveways, potentially, that's another point of discussion. A 20-foot pre-safe buffer required if there's an internal street, so not for individual driveways, just if there's an internal street, and that they abide by the waiting period so that we would not allow any more minor subdivisions, one after the other, back-to-back on adjacent pieces of property, as a way to skirt our regulations. On the other hand, medium subdivisions do require greater requirements from developers. The most expensive one, obviously, would be the internal asphalt street, which would be required for medium subdivisions. Other things such as a sidewalk on one side of the road, sign, street lighting, street trees, you have your 50-foot road frontage buffer, 20% open space requirement. All these things can obviously be edited, but I'll show you this to say that it matters where we have the cutoff between the minor subdivisions and the medium subdivisions. And that ties into our next point. Perhaps the most influential part of why it matters to have the number for the minor subdivisions right is the gravel streets. You all know the cost of paving asphalt, estimates range between $200 and $600 per linear foot, so it's very expensive to pave asphalt streets. This topic of the gravel streets, where do we allow gravel streets? How many houses do we allow on a single gravel street? Where do we require internal streets? Where's that cutoff point between when you can have houses on gravel streets and driveways versus when you have to put in your asphalt road? This was discussed at length, we had a very robust discussion among the members of the Planning Commission over a number of meetings. A number of the concerns mentioned were affordable housing, wanting to be sure that we allow for affordable housing in our community, not creating too strict requirements for small builders and developers, maintaining the rural feel of the county by not having too many houses directly off the main road, safety for residents and drivers, protecting the county from being pressured to take over maintenance of gravel streets, maintaining flexibility for family compounds and heirs. So, there are many competing variables here, and I would like to hear your thoughts on this, particularly as well as the previous slide with minor subdivisions. These are the drafts, you can see how the recommendations, the iterations have changed from draft one to draft three, which is the formal recommendation from the Planning Commission to County Council. See draft three, which is for up to 12 lots in a minor subdivision, no internal streets required, so it could be 12 individual driveways, but only six houses on a single gravel street with a family exception for up to eight houses on a single gravel street.
And all that came through the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
And for the sake of argument, if I remember this correctly, so when some farmer has 100 acres and has four kids, they all want to have a house on that 100 acres, this takes care of that?
Well, there are multiple ways that could be taken care of. We wouldn't regulate individual subdivisions, so if you're carving off a single piece of land, but if you was doing all four at one time, it would fall into the minor subdivision category, would have to ensure that they all had road access, and so under the current recommendation, you'll see there, draft number three, there's a lot of flexibility for that situation. Four is a small number, so the primary topic of discussion among the Planning Commission is where that number should be, four, six, eight, 10, 12, the number they settle on was 12, and up to six people on a single gravel street.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? So, for clarity, under a minor subdivision, we are not, under the way you currently have it from the Planning Commission, there is no requirement for interior roads?
Yes, sir, there is no requirement, so for those 12 lots, each could have its own driveway, or you could have three-person gravel road, four, five, six-person gravel road, just no more than six, but no requirement for any internal roads.
So, you could technically end up with 12 curb cuts, side-by-side on an arterial road?
Under the county ordinances, it might not be allowed by the Department of Transportation, they usually require shared driveways, but we would not have anything that requires that, yes, sir.
And that would still be considered a subdivision where you have homes that are bordering a main road with that many curb cuts?
Yes, sir, and that's sort of a little confusing about what a subdivision is, so we think of a subdivision as like a neighborhood sometimes, technically, legally, it's any time that you have any new parcel created from an existing parcel. So, if you have four new parcels created, it is a subdivision.
Okay, I wanted clarification on that portion, and then my other question, you want me to pause on that question? So, the other question I had was...
Pause for a second, so, yeah, I mean, I will just, we're discussing here, I do have some concerns here, that seems like potentially a lot of curb cuts, and I think that can be some safety concerns there, we've seen that in other, we've seen that in our county already, and it's not ideal, and I think, I think it could lead to accidents, and just wonder, wonder what we could do to trim that, you see in York County, I think they've done some things to tighten that up, potentially. I don't know, I'd like to hear what the councilors to think, what other developments are in that.
I know, I'm sorry, but Jeremy, you made the comment a second ago that even though it's, you know, DOT may not allow it, there's nothing in our ordinance to allow, how can we combat that to be more in line with DOT's regulations so we don't run into this where we say one thing and then they don't allow the other, you know, the same thing?
That's a great question, so you, as the County Council, have a number of options. How it works with new roads in the state is, they set their baseline minimum, I'll call it, and you can either go, if their requirements are here, you all can fire underneath them and leave the call on when driveways, when shared driveways, when three people on a driveway, completely up to the SC DOT. You could try to match what they're doing as nearly as possible so that our codes are in alignment with them, which could be something like for minor subdivisions requiring shared driveways, or three people on a shared driveway if you have houses adjacent to each other off of a road. Or the county has the flexibility to set their requirements higher, and say, for instance, for a minor subdivision, you're doing over five houses, has to be an internal street. So, you have options there, higher, lower, or the same.
Okay.
The logic of all of this seems like we have a planning commission, and those men and women are appointed by this County Council to be there, and their recommendation should be right at the top of what I want to make sure I am listening to, because they're the ones that are gonna have to sit here and talk to the citizens when they come in here to do something. And, you know, I don't want to get off on a tangent, but that's really, I had a conversation with two planning commission people in the last week, and they're pretty happy with what I think that y'all have done. I don't want to change a lot of stuff because I think they put a lot of time and effort into getting this out where they understood what we were trying to do, so...
I guess I would counter on that and say that we all bear that responsibility, and so we need to make sure that what it says, we're comfortable as the elected leaders of the county, that we're comfortable...
I understand it, but I mean, I want to make sure we listen to them.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we need to listen, we all need to think and put our heads together on this. To me, we're currently at between two to four on a single gravel street, it says up to five on a single gravel street allowed for family, that's our current regulation.
Yes, sir.
And we're looking now to go up to eight for a family, up to six without a family, and a minor subdivision in 12 instead of nine. It does seem like we're swinging pretty hard to go from two to four gravel up to six, nine to 12, I mean, we've definitely expanded what a minor subdivision, I think we're gonna have a lot of minor subdivisions coming to Chester County, and we tightened up, the other thing we've done is we tightened up our medium-sized subdivisions, and when we do that, that's gonna naturally make more pressure on the minors, and so I just want to think about what we're doing here, we don't want to have unintended consequences of a bunch of, bunch of developments that we're not quite ready for. I am worried about the county taking over so much gravel roads, and it says here, the previous slide here where it said it's a non-engineered gravel street, I understand that, and that's fine when it's a small, small thing with family and kind of happened over time, but if we have actual developers who are building these, I could see where that's gonna lead to the county, we're gonna have washouts, we're gonna have major road repairs, and though they might not be our roads right now, if there's enough people living on there, they'll be, they'll be petitioning the county for us to add them to the county road list. I don't know, I don't know, I'm a little bit hesitant about where we're at at the moment.
Well, there was one, one in York County, 12, if I remember that right.
Brings me to the next slide that may provide some further support for discussion. I have some of the other counties, I spoke with all of the planning directors of these counties to get their numbers, some of our surrounding ones, Cherokee, Lawrence, Moore. So, York County currently allows up to three houses on a single gravel street, and they allow up to six houses in what we call that minor subdivision before you have to put in the internal, internal paved street.
I think if we all leave the numbers higher than what we currently have, the Spartanburg County option may be good to restrict, you know, how many frontage roads, frontage properties you have, then it could require the interior roads, and that would be a way to sort of take it case by case, I mean, if developers start getting into this category, if you want to call it that, and that's one of their preferential building methods, then that would restrict them to have an interior roads after that much, that many lots on a frontage road. And the way to mitigate that, I agree the numbers may be too high also, I mean, it seems like we're going three or four times what we already have, I'm a little concerned that that may be a little too aggressive.
But to ask the question, what you're talking about, if you have a septic tank in Chester County, it usually takes two acres, so if you're gonna be on a gravel road and you're not, don't have access to storage and stuff, you're gonna have to be pretty much on two acres of land in there to be able to put a well and put a septic tank. And so, you're talking about ten acre, 10 houses, so that's 20-some acres you gotta have to be able to do that, to just be able to put septic tanks in. I don't know any place that you would be doing that for storage, which...
Ms. Raji, I think you're right, so this, the gravel road, the minor subdivision option largely would be the rural areas, largely would be the areas that, even if you could squeeze a septic tank and well on one acre, which I think is kind of more the minimum, our zoning is for two acres.
There's only the parks, and I don't know very much land in Chester County, it parks on one acre.
You're right, you're right, so this would be...
A lot of blackjack here.
Yes, sir, this would be largely rural, one to two-acre subdivisions that would have these gravel streets, my estimation.
Another concern I have has to do with how we're trying to give some consideration for family, while I like the concept, I think it's gonna be very hard to administrate. We're saying we'll do up to eight if it's for family, that's a pretty big number, what if there's one person that's not family, what if, when something happens, and one of those was family, but it's not there now, it just seems to me like that's gonna be a bit of a headache, is it, are the other counties doing anything like that with the family option?
A few of the counties do have a family option similar to ours, our original code was a copy-paste code in large, many other rural counties have almost the same code, it's, it is usually closer to our original number, which was five.
It seems like it might work better at five than it would eight, that seems like a big number.
I like the five.
I agree.
I like the five.
Or potentially do a way with the family option altogether and just stick to a number, I'm just worried about the administration, you know, it just seems like it's gonna be hard to...
I just think, when you're trying to go up to them, I was quiet, I was trying to actually figure out what, how I really felt about it, but I do think the 12 driveway cuts might be a little too much, what if it's in a curve, school bus traffic, things of those natures, the safety, it becomes a safety issue, we may need to reconsider that.
So, can I ask, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a couple more questions, just because I want clarification myself on a few things. Medium subdivisions, as it currently reaches, the recommendation from the Planning Commission, 13 to 40 lots, you would have to have, so if you had 13 homes, you would have to have a sidewalk in that, in that neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
And what's the process for variance?
We have pretty much a blanket variance in here that says that for any of these subdivisions, if there is some particular reason why the developer cannot do it, he can bring anything to the Planning Commission for variance, so we do have a pretty broad provision in there, however, it's not just because I don't want to put sidewalks in, it would have to be, have to be a good reason. On that, the medium subdivision, there's a wide disparity between a 40-home subdivision and a 13-home subdivision, you're absolutely right, one potential option would be to put one more category in, and then if you have more categories, it gets a little more unyieldy, but that is an option.
I did not make that recommendation, just a clarification. And then I have a question on, which I think you just answered that, so my next question was gonna be, I wrote 42 down, so if I had, if I was a developer with a subdivision of 42 homes, would I be locked in to going into that major subdivision, or could I potentially apply for a variance from the Planning Commission to follow the medium guidelines as opposed if I'm one homeowner, is there anything in there to, or is it just cut and dry at the numbers?
There's almost nothing in here that is cut and dry, so because of that blanket variance, the developer could apply for it, and if it was case-specific, then yes, I think that would be a valid reason, if it was just one or two over, we're trying to skirt the rules.
Okay, and then my last question, and I'll be quiet, but the non-engineered gravel road, explain that to me, what's the difference in a, in an engineered and a non-engineered gravel road?
One of the key changes in this code is that we are putting requirements for gravel streets for the first time in Chester County's history, because we previously have not had gravel streets that were allowed. We allowed gravel driveways, and it was unclear if you could put two-person shared driveway, we allowed that, sometimes three-person shared driveway, sometimes you've allowed a four-person shared driveway just because it's so unclear, but we haven't allowed private gravel streets except for the... But we haven't allowed private gravel streets except for the family option for the up to five. That is a gravel street. We don't have any requirements on what it must be. So we have put requirements on the thickness of the gravel, the width of the road, the width of the right of way for those gravel streets. And engineered requirement would be saying that an engineer has to create the plans. We would review them, would be sure that they sign off on it, to be sure that the plan is matched our specifications. The non-engineered requirement would not show it on the plans necessarily. You wouldn't have a page two of the plans that showed cut out with the gravel street. It would be something that, for instance, we would go out and inspect on site to be sure it met our recommendations, but it would not be planned by an engineer. That could take into account both the materials used or where the street went on the property, things like strange or something.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Parker. You came down to my house the other day and it used to be a gravel driveway down there. It was seven hundred feet. So David McCain loaned me the money to build the concrete. I'm still paying for it. Now, is seven hundred feet, you know, single family at home back there, is that something I could still have? Or would I have to do that? So I could have a gravel driveway back to my house and not have to spend twenty thousand dollars on concrete?
Right. So none of these codes would really apply to individual subdivisions, which is an individual house. So if you have a piece of land and three acres somewhere and you're wanting to just put a single house on it, really, as long as you had access to a road, none of this would apply to you. You could put a dirt road, whatever the car with transportation.
I come back of what if my son wanted to move back here from Fort Mill, and I have ten acres and I give him a lot, and he still uses my gravel driveway. I guess that's what I'm asking.
It would become a shared driveway at that point. So, yes, sir. What we have in here for driveways, to be clear where the line is between a driveway and a street, is currently up to two people that can be on a driveway. And if you put a third, if you had your grandson, your grandson on there, he wanted to build a house.
My daughter came back from Fort Mill, and I gave her a lot, and she still.
So what we currently have is yes, you could use the gravel street, but you'd just have to improve it.
What I don't want to do is I don't want to have to sit here and tell Speaker Wilson he can't give his kids a piece of land to build a house on, on his farm. That's just foolish. And I understand about paying developments and all that kind of stuff, but I want to make absolutely sure that I'm not dictating what somebody can do with his land. This is an awful lot of dictation right here as to what people can do with their land. They're paying for that. I want to be very careful in how I vote to do that for people. This is Chester County. It might be, it might be not Chester County in six more years. It's right in there still in Chester County. And there's thirty thousand people been here since nineteen hundred. We're bringing in people right now that I had a woman stop me today that does not live here telling me how bad it is because we're destroying the, because Mr. Wilson is on the same good agricultural land. What else is on there?
Mr. Wilson, and to follow up, so I want to understand the non-engineered gravel driveway. And I'll explain why to council, but you, we can still set standards on the non-engineered gravel driveway. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We do have standards written in here. New to Chester County, just start on page thirty-one of the code if you have it in front of you. But yes, we can have standards.
So here's the point of this. Emergency vehicles have to get down to these roads. And one of the problems that we have sometimes, and this isn't dictating what an individual driveway or what you can do, but you know as a fireman, how many times have you gone and cooked at somebody's house because of a tree?
I'm a landlord.
And so I think when you have a subdivision, we as county have to ensure that our emergency vehicles, law enforcement, ambulance, fire trucks can all get down those roads safely. And you can get multiple ones down in there as well. So that's my only reason for asking that question is I want to make sure we don't do something that, we've got a situation where fire trucks, ambulances, and emergency vehicles cannot get into or get out of without damage. Or if they're not unengineered, the quality of those that comes to a point where one day, if we have a major haline again or something and damage occurs, and we can't get back in to provide life safety to people. So that's my only concern that I bring up. But if we have standards that are set forth in there, there.
I know you got more to cover, so why don't you keep going and we might circle back to this or work on this in the next, if that's needed.
Okay. Sounds fine. Here again briefly, just for your edification or some of the concerns with other counties. Commissioner, Councilman Raines pointed out Spartanburg County's. That was discussed at length in the planning commission meetings. So that was one of the ones that they considered with that requirement for the internal road after a certain point. It wasn't ultimately the recommendation, but it was considered. At the request of the county council, we did put some more specification for outdoor amenity areas for some of these new parks. As a reminder, we are not requiring that each new subdivision have all of these, but we are offering them options that they have to pick. For instance, one out of five, or two out of five, or three out of five, depending on the size of the subdivision. So we put a minimum size for dog parks, baseline of five thousand square feet for minimum subdivisions. Talked about fenced-in area. We have a picnic area where we set at least two picnic tables are required. Playground minimum area, which is roughly that of Nice Bridge there in Richburg, which is that picture there, two thousand five hundred square feet. But there are provisions in there. If the planning commission feels that the plans presented are inadequate, they can request more equipment, more size, more playgrounds, et cetera. Sports fields, we changed this to allow a graded common or community green. You can think about like the horseshoe at University of South Carolina. You have a big graded field with grass, with buildings all around it. Same sort of thing can be done for neighborhoods and counted as sports fields. And finally, we put some specifications for walking trail that I think are not too onerous for developers, but has to be at least four feet wide, specifying the equipment or the materials that can be used, and the length for medium subdivisions, and then should be higher than larger. That looks good to you. I'll move on to the open space. So the open space requirement, this builds on the county council ordinance twenty twenty-two five that was passed in April of twenty twenty-two, which set a new standard for the county. Keep a rural feel, requiring that twenty percent of land in every subdivision be counted as open space. This is something that the council then felt very strongly about, and this continued to the day. So we are built, we are building on top of that. It was originally toyed around to consider thirty percent of buildable land. We decided twenty percent might be the best option. But, and this is a change, so this is twenty percent of buildable land. So we have had in the past, developers come in and count the creek at the edge of the property, swamp running through the property as open space land at the recommendation of council. At your last review, it was asked to change this to buildable land, which should increase the aggregate number of land saved. We also put in specifications saying that natural features may be improved, such as reforestation, if there's existing pasture that's saved, managing the pasture, landscaping. And also a specification that recreation areas like those parks, community greens may count up to half of this requirement, and road frontage buffers may also count towards it. Are there any thoughts about the open space? Does it sound good to you? You're in no objections. I'll move on. Management of infrastructure and open space. We have added in also to the request of council some requirements to clarify who owns and maintains this open space. I put in a two-year warranty period in which the county can identify flaws with the infrastructure, such as straight trees dying. This is not intended to be the county going out and bearing the responsibility for identifying cracks in the sidewalk, but it is something that the county can step in. If, for instance, the builder puts in a hundred trees and they all die in six months, the county could require them to put more straight trees in. But this is a new clause. Other new clauses include HOA documents. Obviously, a lot of this open space recreation facilities will be up to the HOA. And so we are requiring that they include their HOA documents in the final plan application, as well as a plan.
I have a question about HOA.
Yes, sir.
Who controls HOA?
Who controls it?
Who controls it?
The homeowners elective board.
They can be dictators and telling you, you've got to put your trash can six inches away from your house. You can't have a flag. You can't do this, that, and the other stuff. The homeowners association can dictate what goes on within that community, that bike.
You are correct. And they also would bear the responsibility for the maintenance of the things like the private streets. We also would include gravel streets. They have to be designated for maintenance by the HOA or property owners in agreement with the clerk of court. This is to ensure that the county will never have to take over gravel roads unless it chooses. Put as strict requirements as possible upfront that gravel streets are the responsibility of the people living on them. I talked extensively with the planning director for Fairfield County. They have the similar ordinance too, that the agreement is recorded with the clerk of court. It's worked out very well for them. We don't have this currently in our codes, so I think this would be a helpful change to be sure that if citizens call and complain about gravel streets, the council's under no obligation to take them over unless it so chooses. And this is to ensure the financial sustainability of the county and protect taxpayer resources.
So how would that work for the minor subdivisions? That would be, that would be.
Yes, so for the minor subdivisions, which are the only ones that would be allowed to have gravel streets, there would have to be some agreement among the property owners, not necessarily an HOA. It could just be a one-page agreement that says there's five people living on this road, and we're going to split the cost of this road of maintaining it. Each person will have one-fifth of their responsibility. And that would be recorded with the clerk of court and any deed with the property. So any new person that buys a house there, it would see in their deed a reference to this agreement. So no one would be left out of the loop ideally. And they would know that they do have responsibilities to maintain the road.
There was the homeowners association in Richmond, and they had to pay to maintain the road going in. And then within the last year or two, that road got turned over to the county, and the county took it over and made it. So for a period of time, the homeowners association had to pay to maintain the road, but it ended up going to the county of Huntington, Huntington Oaks or whatever it is, where T lives. That road was Huntington, where T Melton lives. That was a homeowners association road. And then after a period of time, it got taken over by the county. They came in and built it to the county status, who I remember right now. I might be wrong.
The council, but did the council vote to approve to take that route?
I appreciate that, Ms. Raji. We also have clause five under here, which is new, which says that for this open space, the parks, if the HOA is not doing a good job of maintaining it, the county has the option, not the requirement. They can come in, do the work, and build a HOA. An option that hopefully council will never have to use, but a tool in your tool bag if you needed it. There's no more questions on that. I will move on in the interest of time. Conservation subdivisions. You will see their picture from our lovely workshop about a month ago. I hope you all enjoyed that as much as I did. I have added in conservation subdivisions as an option within this code. However, they're not allowed anywhere in our zoning ordinances right now. So we will not have conservation subdivisions allowed unless the county council decides later to allow them. Perhaps in a separate zoning district, like only in R two or only in R one. But I have added the codes in here and the requirements for them. When council's ready to flip that switch and allow them in certain parts of the county, the text will already be in here that regulates them. I hope that makes sense. So again, you have multiple options to approve conservation subdivisions if you want to. You can approve them by right anywhere in the county, for a special zoning district, special overlay district, or other options. You don't have to figure that out right now. There are at least three landowners around the county who own rural pieces of land who are interested in a rural conservation subdivision, where they would build houses on one-acre lots and put fifty percent of their land in agricultural or conservation use. So there are three people interested in them. One option for a short-term plan may be to allow rural conservation subdivisions. And R two zoning is a special exception or a conditional use. And then figure out how to move forward later. But that can happen at any point during this year. It could happen during the summer after passage of these codes, in fall twenty twenty-five, or at any other time. Y'all have any questions about the conservation subdivisions right now?
Well, as part of that, Mr. Heston was in the Post and Courier this morning with an article on the development in Chester County. And also in the last couple of days, state legislature is in the process of getting able, maybe changing home rule, turn over the roads to the counties versus the states so we can deal with infrastructure processes going on within the county for the roads instead of us having to have the state take care of them. We may end up with that because one of the biggest problems the state legislature has, they don't hear about anything else except roads. They go, no, so by giving it to us, we'll catch the bug around here. And so at any rate, I think we, if we're going to have conservation subdivisions, and I think there were some people that really bought into that the other night when we were up here for a long time. And then if the state is going to turn over roads before we go getting into a whole lot of stuff, we need to see where that is. If that's true about the roads, and if it's something that conservation is, we need to probably be looking at that now.
Well, in all fairness, we're going to be friends after I say this, but if I'm sitting here waiting for the state to make a decision on anything, we're going to be sitting here toiling our homes. So we're making the decisions.
You mentioned a rules conservation subdivisions. Is there a special exemption, exception, exemption in the code now? Or are you saying you can have that?
Yes, sir. So we don't currently allow conservation. We don't give any incentives for conservation subdivisions now. The incentive mechanism for these rural conservation subdivisions would be R two zoning. If you wanted to build on one-acre lots and put fifty percent of your land aside. So the county gets out of it fifty percent of the property saved in the easement. The landowner receives less infrastructure cost, smaller lots, a few other minor things like no street lights, sidewalks. But we don't have that option now. So if council wanted to try out the conservation subdivision with a piece of property, you could ask to have that included as a special exception under, for instance, R two zoning only. And then that would, that could be approved on a case-by-case basis for individual properties.
If we have some interest in that, and like you said, there was a lot of positive input on that, and a lot of people like that, wouldn't we want to go ahead and give ourselves that option at this point?
You certainly could. You certainly could, Councilman Raines. So what you could do is authorize me to create a text amendment for you that allows conservation, rural conservation subdivisions as a special exception. And then figure out, maybe have a couple, see what they look like, if they're viable. And then you could do a longer-term solution later on to allow them in other parts to.
And that would be a question for ZBA, correct?
You could do it as a conditional use, which I would approve, or a special exception for the ZBA. The ZBA might be a good home for it.
It seemed like we would be better to give ourselves some flexibility at this point rather than having no options, I think.
But at, at the end of the day, we're, we're sitting here talking again for a very long time, and we don't know what we're talking about because until the schools decide what they're going to build, I'll build the schools. We don't have any option because we don't have any schools years ago with all the stuff we're talking about there. Four times they probably know. So right at this minute, I don't know about Justin, but of course, it's passed. So...
All right. Well, Mr. Rains, if you, if you would like me to draft up a text ordinance for council to consider, I certainly can. Mr. Agee, to your point with the schools, yes, that's certainly a valid concern, and we'll address that in the comprehensive plan. I have a meeting with the chair of the school board tomorrow. Mr. Hester and I have been talking about that too. So we will certainly address the schools in depth of the comprehensive plan to figure out where we will, where the county council will allow high-density housing. So this is, the conservation subdivisions would be for the rural subdivisions. This would be for those two-acre lots that they're entitled, build houses on two-acre lots currently. It's just a matter of how those houses will look, how those subdivisions will look.
The people that I represent are more involved in conservation, uh, plant development and the cookie cutter plant. And I think, I just don't think we need to waste much time as far as Richburg goes because I'm pretty sure the people in Richburg, Karen may have a different opinion, because she lives out there just like I do. People I talk to are in conservation.
And the conservation subdivision could help. I'll give you an example. I won't say the landowner or the location, but there is a parcel of land in East Chester that's over 200 acres, where normally in times past, the landowner would apply to rezone it to put five or 600 houses on it. Now they're interested in doing a conservation subdivision, only putting 100 houses on it and saving the rest. So you will still allow landowners to use their land to make a profit on it, but the burden on the taxpayers will be much less than it has been with very high-density PDs in these rural areas. There's no other thoughts on that. I'll move on, and I will work on a text amendment for you for the special exception for your consideration at a later meeting.
That's my recommendation, unless anybody feels that's something we don't want to step off into, but I mean, we're, we're there, I think.
So I will do that for the rural conservation subdivision only. Urban conservation subdivision, maybe we can address that at a later date. Some of the incentives are no sidewalks, street lighting required for these large-lot rural subdivisions, slightly narrower streets, alternative stormwater management allowed, and allowing half of that open space to be kept in private ownership and an agricultural easement for crop and timber production. This should help our farmers. So those are the primary changes. Chairman Wilson, I'm not sure if you wanted to loop back around to anything, or if there's any other things within these ordinances that you want to see changed before the next draft.
I've got one other question, maybe I'll jump it out of the way. But Mr. Huff is here tonight. He's the chairman of the planning commission. He and I were discussing it. And on the next to the last page, the, the planning commission, there was an arrest warrant, administrative official, all that was taken out, but there's still a misdemeanor penalty. What in the world we want to charge somebody something on their property? Now, that goes into the administrative official. It's a lot of this, you know, they, you can penalize somebody for doing something as opposed to doing a complaint or a court order or something like that. And then, but over here on, on page 27, it says appeal of administrative action. Now, I'm, I'm a guy that's, what's good for the goose is good for the gatherer. We're going to penalize somebody on the back sheet for doing something wrong, but the planning director and the people that work there, if they make a mistake, we're going to slap them on the hand. And this, this, if you're going to penalize the people out here that make a mistake by charging them with a misdemeanor, then somebody needs to hold a planning people accountable for a little snake, snake-like.
What would be a charge for misdemeanor on the property? What's the, what would be a charge for, for some of that?
That's on page 51. All of this language has been in our code since 2002. I did not change any of it, with the exception of removing the, the clause allowing arrests that Councilman Agee pointed out to the planning commission. But all the rest has been in our code since 2002 and is pretty standard for other counties and cities. I have not personally issued a misdemeanor or taken someone to the courts, but I know it is done for subdivisions and developers.
Ms., Mr. Agee, just for clarification, you're talking about page 27, appeal of administrative action? Regarding the planning director being held accountable or the planning commission?
Well, what all's in that, what is all in that statement when you read it, if they make a mistake?
So I think if, when you're referring to page 51, I think it's already been struck that arrest warrants, administrative oath, or officials, and all that's been struck.
Planning commission shall act on the appeal within 60 days, appeal from the planning commission.
We're talking about two different, I'm going back to your first comment, page 51. And if there is a misdemeanor associated with that, it's probably regarding states, statutory law. Because we would only enforce from an ordinance standpoint an ordinance, so. But back to page 27, 25-10. So you want to hold the planning director or the planning commission accountable?
It does not, the, the planning director during the subdivision, you may be appealed to just plan by the applicant or another interested party, whether there's less than an error in the order requirement.
So, so that, that, that process there is, the planning director has the ability to, to, during the review process, to issue his opinion or his, his authority that he's given. Says that it can be appealed, which that's, that happens on a regular occasion. Well, I say regular occasion. I know of at least a once in the past month or two months that it's happened. Am I right?
Is on the Board of Appeals?
No, that, that goes, they can appeal his decision to the planning commission. So his decision is not necessarily binding. They can appeal it to the planning commission, and that actually happened, I think, on Armory Road, or was going to happen.
It was going to, they withdrew the application.
They withdrew and resubmitted.
Right.
Well, somewhere in the process, if it goes to the zoning board of appeals, that can only be appealed to the circuit court.
Yes, sir. You are correct. If it goes before the planning commission, then after that, it goes to the circuit court, and that's standard across all counties in the state, I believe.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I want to clarify that we're not holding our planning director criminally liable for decisions that he makes on good faith as, unless he violates a law of South Carolina statute.
And if he's something in good faith on this property, we're going to charge him if he makes a mistake.
I think that's all taken out. Am I not correct?
The arrest warrant part is taken out, but the misdemeanor part is still in there.
We can, we can review that, that, unless there's a state law that requires us, or that we can't override now as the sheriff's office is going to go out and, well, he's gone. The sheriff's office is going to go out and pursue a warrant for that? Probably very old statutory law. I just want to make sure we're not putting Jeremy in jail.
I appreciate that, Mr. Hester. Okay? And Mr. Agee, Alex found a little bit. So these codes are part of the Chester County Code of Ordinances, just like all of your other laws. Now, they may look a little different because they're in a new PDF, but these are county laws, just like any other county law. So the purpose of this is to say that they're enforceable.
The state has laws that they can enforce.
Yes, sir.
All right. So is there any more discussion from council? I think we're probably going to have to work on this again. I'm not so sure we're going to be ready for, for a press reading. We'll see. We'll work it out. So if I don't hear any more discussion, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Ward. All right. So that brings us to item 10D, which is the selection of the grievance committee members. Our county attorney, Ms. Hartman, is going to speak to this.
Thank you, Chairman. At our last meeting, there were updates made to our grievance policy. As part of the implementation process, the council must now appoint members to serve on that grievance committee. In accordance with county policy, the committee consists of seven members total, three exempt employees, three non-exempt employees, and two alternates. Mr. Hester, Ms. Malley, and I have compiled a list of employees from various departments representing a range of experience and years of service for your consideration and place at your desk there.
So... Mr. Chairman, if I can just follow up with her. While, while council selects the committee, we are cognizant of the fact that council may not know all employees as well as whether they're exempt or not exempt status. Recognizing that fact, this list was put together for your approval of selection. They represent varying levels of diversity. They include departments assigned, years of service, and we have also vetted all of their employee files, and they all have exemplary service records. So, Mr. Chairman, if council is agreeable to the proposed list, just a simple motion to accept the proposed grievance committee as a selection by council would suffice.
I would entertain that.
I'll make a motion, we accept the proposed grievance committee as presented to us.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to accept as presented. Everyone has that list, right? All right.
Yes.
We're all on the same page on that, so any discussion? I mean, not a call for the question. There's a favor, please, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. So that list has been adopted, thank you. Next is 11A, which is the Fort Long Fire Protection District appointment. Councilman Agee?
Mr. Huff, recently is having a service Wednesday for him in long-term fire board chairman for Fort Long. Recently moved down here from New York, was involved in 9/11, had some friends. And so hopefully, if you have an opportunity, they're going to have a service for him Wednesday. But Mr. Earl Thrillkill had been the appointee of the town of Fort Long, their fire board, and I'm going to recommend we appoint Mr. Thrillkill as my appointee or my recommendation to the county council, to the Fort Long Fire Board, to take Mr. Huff's place.
All right. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? There's a favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have the item 11B, which is a Hazel Pittman Center Board of Direction Directors. Again, Mr. Agee?
The Hazel Pittman Center is a, is a very worthwhile organization. I worked in the Department of Mental Health in South Carolina for a long time, and mental health and drug addiction, alcoholism are things that really concerned me a lot. And we have a, must I have, a gentleman over in Fort Long, name just went right out of my brain. He retired after a long time, and, and I've been looking for somebody to take his place. We have a gentleman that lives in, in District One named Tony Malinello. He is retired master sergeant out of the Air Force. He has a real strong interest in mental health. I don't want to get into it, but for the sake of, he retired out of the Air Force and he is very interested. I had him go and talk to Ms. Gibson, and they hit it right off. And so Mr. Malinello, I would like to recommend to be the appointee for District One to the Hazel Pittman Board.
A second to motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Call for the question. There's a favor, please, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All a favor. So that brings us to item 12A, which is executive session. A is the discussion. Discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, Project P, 2529. Motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, and we move to executive session.
So... Any discussion? Call for the vote. There's a favor, please, raise your hand and say aye.